Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council being held this Monday, November 6, 2023. We are in council chambers and live streamed on YouTube. It's after 7:30 PM. The next meeting will be Monday, November 20, 2023. Ms. Hamilton as clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Cavan.
Here.
Ms. Knappich.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Reynolds.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Ansel.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
And Mr. Ansel did advise he would not be in attendance this evening. Despite his absence, we do have a quorum, and at this time I would ask you to join the City Council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, I would entertain the motion to approve the minutes of October 16, 2023 meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Sanders to approve, second by Ms. Warden. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And the minutes of October 16th are approved. Welcome, Mayor. Good to see you. We had quite the presentation on the comprehensive plan. I thought the folks did a wonderful job, or Aaron did a wonderful job, and the graphics were great, and I learned a lot.
Well, great. Thank you, President Biden-Duckey. We've been very pleased with Aaron and OHM and the product that they bring to us each time we've used them, so good company there. Good evening, council members and members of the public. I hope you took the opportunity to join the OHM group this evening between 5:00 and 7:00 PM here in City Hall to review and make comments on our city's comprehensive plan update. If not, you have one more chance to review and weigh in on this very important document for our city. Tonight's session was recorded and will be posted on our city's website on November 9th, which is interactive. You will be able to make your thoughts and comments known on this site. This will be the final opportunity to weigh in on our 10-year comprehensive plan for Worcester. This plan will guide the mayor, council, and city staff in how we develop and spend dollars for our community over the next 10 years. So please help us by making your thoughts known. Council members, as of this afternoon, our clerk of council, Amy Hamilton, had not received any recommendations of people who you think would be good on a compensation commission as required by our city charter. Please make any recommendations you have to Amy by Wednesday, November 8th, that's this Wednesday. After that day, the administration will put together a group to recommend to council for your approval. This important citizen commission will review compensation of elected officials for our city, then recommend to city council and the mayor what compensation should be set for the mayor, president of council, and city council members. An important date you will want to note, a week from Friday, November 17th, is our annual Window Wonderland in Worcester's downtown. Our downtown will be decorated for the holidays with the window displays, Christmas wreath, the tree, horse-drawn wagon rides, live reindeers, and of course, the jolly old Santa himself will arrive and visit with the children. This will be a fun kickoff to the holiday season for our community. And lastly, if you haven't done so already, please make sure you go to vote tomorrow. This is our privilege and duty as Americans to enjoy this right. So that ends my report for tonight, President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no petitions this evening, and no one signed up to speak. No committee reports or public hearings, so we'll ride into the item of unfinished business, which is the third reading of ordinance number 2023-24, will be presented by Mr. Reynolds. Ms. Hamilton, would you please read the title?
Ordinance number 2023-24, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with 585 Partners LLC for community reinvestment area tax incentives.
Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours.
If I may interrupt, Mr. President, I'm going to recuse myself from this legislation.
Okay.
Mr. Biden-Dyke, I've been in contact with Mr. Stalin, who's one of the applicants on this request for CRA tax payment, and he has requested that we table this for this meeting until we have a full House with Mr. Ansel being absent, and I will make that motion.
All right. Motion to table ordinance number 2023-24. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on motion to table the ordinance?
Knappich.
No.
Myers.
Yes.
Cavan.
No.
Warden.
Yes.
Sanders, oh, sorry, Reynolds.
Yes.
So my eager public school mascot said three to two in favor of tabling it, so I would say that ordinance number 2023-24 will be tabled until possibly the next meeting. And we will note that Mr. Sanders is returning to join the rest of council. Okay, ordinance number 2023-25 will be presented by Mr. Reynolds. Ms. Hamilton, would you please read the title?
Ordinance number 2023-25, an ordinance amending Chapter 162, management benefits of the codified ordinances of the city of Worcester, Ohio, by adding the position of Assistant Information Systems Manager.
And this will be the second reading. Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The administration addressed this last meeting. This is a need to add a position of Assistant Information Systems Manager, as much as anything to reflect the increasing importance of technology in everything we do today. If there are questions here, I know the administration is available to address those, but I think we went over this in some detail at the last meeting, and I would like to move to put this on third and final reading.
All right. Motion by Mr. Reynolds to put ordinance number 2023-25 on third and final reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Would you please call the roll on the motion to move this to final reading?
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Ms. Warden.
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Cavan.
Yes.
Ms. Knappich.
Yes.
All right. The motion to put it on final reading passes. Mr. Reynolds, I look to you again.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 2023-25.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Reynolds, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Knappich. Questions, discussions, comments? Seeing none, Ms. Hamilton, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Ms. Warden.
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Cavan.
Yes.
Ms. Knappich.
Yes.
Ordinance number 2023-25 passes. New business. First reading of resolution number 2023-62. It'll be presented by Mr. Sanders. It is budgeted, so should not require suspension of the rules, but it does require Ms. Hamilton to read the title.
Resolution number 2023-62, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to seek bids from network infrastructure vendors to upgrade present network routers and switches and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. As in all computer systems, they're good until they're not. In this particular case, our network infrastructure is aging, and a significant portion of its past, its manufacturer's support lifecycle, which means it's no longer supported, won't receive security updates, and this is an important backbone in terms of technology and communications for all city departments, phones, computers, servers, wastewater, water water, financial services, and GIS. So from that standpoint, like I said, it's one of those things that we think we kind of need it, so I would motion to adopt resolution 2023-62.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Excuse me, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Myers. Any comments or questions?
It'd be nice if the Assistant Information Systems Manager is going to get on the ground floor, hopefully, with the new system, so they don't have to relearn.
Anything further? Ms. Hamilton, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Ms. Warden. Yes. Mr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Cavan.
Yes.
Ms. Knappich.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Resolution number 2023-62 passes. First reading of resolution number 2023-63. It'll be presented by Ms. Warden. It is slated for three readings. Ms. Hamilton, would you, oh, three readings, I'm sorry, I have a B for budgeted, I can't even read. It's budgeted, so we'll not need three readings, but it does, again, need Ms. Hamilton to read the title.
Resolution number 2023-63, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a contract with Esri Inc. of Gehanna, Ohio, for a three-year subscription for providing the platform and services, the city's geographic information system, GIS, and allowing for immediate enactment.
And Ms. Warden, the floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you. So this is a request for the city to enter into a three-year annual subscription agreement with Esri to provide the platform and services that the city's GIS system uses, and the GIS system is primarily used by our city staff, including contractors, developments, and some of our residents as well. The operating costs will not be, as this is budgeted, the operating cost won't be affected going forward, but this will come out of our capital funds, $17,000 per year. As Mr. President Biden-Dyke stated, though, this is a budgeted item, and so I would like to make a motion to move, to approve, sorry.
All right. Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Any further discussions or questions? Ms. Hamilton, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ms. Warden.
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Cavan.
Yes.
Ms. Knappich.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Resolution number 2023-63 has been passed. First reading of resolution number 2023-64. This will be presented by Ms. Warden. This one I do have slated for three readings. Before I get back to you, Ms. Warden, Ms. Hamilton, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2023-64, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for pavement repairs on certain city streets and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. This is always a positive type of expenditure, as, you know, everybody wants their streets to be in the best condition as possible, so this request is just to advertise for bids to get a contract for the lowest and best bidder to resurface Palmer Street, just north of Bowman, up to Wayne Avenue, and then Oak Hill, south of Wayne Avenue, as well as concrete pavement replacements on West Liberty between West Bowman Street and Oak Hill Roads. A portion of this project is going to be funded by ODOT's Large Cities Dollars, and the city will then be responsible for 43.7%, which is, amounts to $396,441 out of the total $910,000 bill. So this is a very big expense, but it's also something that, I mean, it keeps our roadways safe and our cars in better running condition, so I see no reason to prolong this, so I would like to move this to, or I'm sorry, I would like to motion to suspend the rules.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cavan. Please call the roll, if you would, on the motion to suspend the rules.
Ms. Warden.
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Cavan.
Yes.
Ms. Knappich.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
The rules are suspended. Ms. Warden, do you have a motion for us?
I do. I move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Any further comments, questions? Mr. Cavan.
With the ODOT Large Cities capital improvement added, it looks like a really, really good deal, so it's nice that we're only paying 43%.
It's nice when we get our tax dollars back from Columbus. Seeing nothing further, do please call the roll on the motion to adopt.
Ms. Warden.
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Cavan.
Yes.
Ms. Knappich.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Resolution number 2023-64 passes. We'll have a first reading of resolution number 2023-65. It'll be presented by Ms. Warden. That one is budgeted also. Before I get back to you, Ms. Warden, Ms. Hamilton, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2023-65, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise for bids and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the replacement of a storm sewer on Winkler Drive, allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Yes, so as Ms. Hamilton said, we are looking to replace a storm sewer on Winkler Drive. This is a budgeted item, and the total cost is estimated at about $70,000. We are seeking bids from the lowest and best bidder to replace an existing 36-inch corrugated metal storm sewer that conveys the water from Winkler Drive and Torrey Circles intersection to its natural drainage channel. Currently, the sewer is in bad condition, and apparently there have also been some sinkholes in the area due to the decay of this equipment or this material. And so I think for the safety and well-being of everybody, this is a really good move for us to make this change up there. I would be remiss to not say that Mr. Rice is here tonight, so if anybody would like to ask him a question, once I make my motion, please do so, but otherwise, we're going to make a motion to approve.
All right. Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cavan. Any questions of Mr. Fitz or comments, Ms. Knappich?
Yeah, I do have a question. If we're replacing the existing 36-inch corrugated metal storm sewer, what is the storm sewer going to be, the new one, going to be made of?
It'll be plastic.
With a longer lifespan. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, plastic.
That's a good thing. Thank you.
Can you tell us, Mr. Rice, when approximately you plan to carry out this? I mean, obviously, we have to put it out to bid, but do you have a timeline?
I'll put it out soon after, and probably next spring.
Okay.
Because there is some pavement repairs that need to be done, so I have completion date by next May, June, the contract, so hopefully we'll get a good bid that way, they can kind of work a good schedule.
Sure.
I do have another question.
Great, thank you.
About how long will the project last, do you think, so that we know, basically, how long the citizens would be inconvenienced?
There will be no inconvenience. It's off the road, it's going through these minutes to the drainage way, so Winkler shouldn't be closed at all during the project.
Excellent. That's what everybody loves to hear. Thank you very much.
And I misspoke, it was Mr. Rice that was here to answer questions, but next time it comes up that you were to answer questions, I will give it to Mr. Fitz, just to even the playing field.
Are you going to call him Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to keep it even.
All right. Seeing nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ms. Knappich.
Yes.
Mr. Cavan.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Ms. Warden.
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes.
All right. Resolution number 2023-65 passes. First reading of resolution number 2023-66. It'll be presented by Mr. Cavan. It is a budgeted item. Ms. Cavan, Ms. Hamilton, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2023-66, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a technical services contract with Med Account of Cincinnati, Ohio, for billing services related to the city EMS service and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Cavan, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. This is a request from the Fire Department, Fire Division, to enter into a new contract for EMS billing. We have done this before, but it was in 2017, and we haven't revisited on the council floor because the threshold was not $50,000, although we have had an increase in rides in the ambulance, so that is expected to go over that, exceed that $50,000, so that's why it's brought before council. So we are asking to, the Fire Department is asking to renew this contract, and some of the terms, the gross billing fees are staying the same, which is 6%, but it's something that we've done before, and I do see Mr. Salee here, if anyone has any questions. But the total cost of the contract is somewhere between $55,000 and $60,000. But again, we're recouping part of that back because they are a billing agency, and they, it's in their best interest to collect. If anyone has any questions, I think Mr. Salee could probably answer better than me.
I actually do. We've had this service without going out for bids since 2017. I assume that you're pretty satisfied with the service, since you don't want to go out for bids again on this. Have you done any research as to what other companies are, I mean, I don't know if there's anything else available comparable out there?
Yeah, we have. So we, our previous EMS billing company was bought out by Med Cow, who is our third-party EMS billing company. They've done a great job. We transitioned with them, and we entered into an auto-renew contract since 17, so the contractual language has just rolled over with a 6%, so our charges have increased since that time. Now, our revenue hasn't exceeded the point where we've exceeded the $50,000 threshold to get council's approval, but last year and this year, we have exceeded that because calls have been increasing and transports have been increasing. So we're just coming to authorize us to exceed the $50,000 threshold for this particular vendor. We do plan to go out for an RFP in '24, and we've given them notice already that we will have to do that to see if there's another product or vendor out there that has a, you know, equitable service and costs, but we'll see how that comes out, probably mid-'24.
Is there any specific reason that you could pinpoint as to why the number of EMS runs has increased? Is it an increase in population, an increase in any type of call in particular?
Yeah. I can't pinpoint it. I mean, I could probably do an hour-long lecture on, you know, causes of EMS increases and, you know, redundancy in the healthcare system, non-insured people utilizing EMS as their primary care physician, you know, increased mental health, you know, episodes and situations. The elderly population, you know, we're having, our population as they get older and older each year becomes a primary utilizer of our emergency medical service, transporting. The nursing home services have been having trouble getting non-emergency transports, you know, for inner facilities, which then, if they can't get a transport and the timing gets delayed and delayed, it becomes an emergency, and then they utilize us. So it's just a variety of factors in which our services are, you know, getting utilized more significantly. Now, the double-edged sword is that when we do use more, and also, since we build for the service for the transport, we're gaining more revenue, and with the new revenue, obviously, is why we have to come to this contractual permission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing nothing further, Ms. Hamilton, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt? Are we in second? We didn't have a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay. Usually we have discussion afterwards. My bad.
Sorry about that.
All right. Motion to adopt by Mr. Cavan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Is anything further in terms of discussion?
Sorry.
Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Knappich.
Yes.
Mr. Cavan.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Ms. Warden.
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Resolution number 2023-66 passes and falling right up with regards to ambulance services is Resolution number 2023-67. It'll be presented by Mr. Cavan. It is budgeted. Ms. Hamilton, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2023-67, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds to remount and refurbish a 2013 ambulance onto a new chassis and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Cavan, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President. Yes, a request from the Fire Department as well to remount, refurbish a 2013 important ambulance onto a new chassis. It's kind of a recycled sort of situation where by doing this, by changing out the box, if you will, we can save ourselves, it's $150,000, I believe. So with that, it's nice that we're able to do that. We've done it before, and Chief Salee is here to answer any questions if there is any on this request.
But before that, I'm not going to let it get caught. You have a motion for it.
I make a motion to adopt.
All right.
Resolution 2023-67.
All right. Motion to adopt by Mr. Cavan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Now we'll open it up for discussion.
Chief Salee, it says in our notes that this will allow us to basically have the use of the ambulance a year sooner than purchasing new. What's the timeframe that it will take to remount this unit?
We're looking at approximately a year, maybe earlier.
So you're two years out for a new?
Between two to three years, depending on the matter.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay.
And with the replacement of the medic was anticipated to be fiscal year '24 budget, and then through the budgeting process and the unsuccessful, you know, monitors being replaced, we were able to flip-flop them. Utilizing the remount versus new process, we're going to be able to, you know, save some money and get it sooner versus, you know, going with a full brand-new one. But how our fleet rotates, this will allow us to be able But how our lead rotates, this will allow us to be able to take our reserve out of service because we have utilized and replaced our new ambulances, and they're in good working order. So, we have the ability to set it aside and run with three good ambulances while the reserve is redundant.
Great. Thank you.
Chief Salee, might be getting ahead of our upcoming budget conversations, but with the lead times on ambulance as well as the other fire equipment we've run into in the past, we may wish to get in the queue. As calls for service continues to increase and the availability of getting something on any kind of a reasonable notice is an issue, I will look forward to seeing the order at least placed in the budget, although it obviously will take some time to get it.
Okay. Nothing further. Ms. Hamilton, would you please call the rule on the motion to adopt?
Mr. Cavan.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Ms. Warden.
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Knappich.
Yes.
Resolution number 2023, day 67 passes. Well, the first read of ordinance number 2023, day 26. It'll be presented by Mr. Sanders. It is slated for three readings. Ms. Hamilton, would you please read the title? In a short one, it is.
Ordinance number 2023-26. An ordinance amending the annual appropriation ordinance.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Dordia has requested additional funds for the health insurance premiums for the city employees due to the fact that the rates have gone up, and we've also had a few employees that have gone to more expensive programs due to life changes. And so consequently, what was originally budgeted is now not enough. And so, with that, I do have a question from Mr. Dordia. I'm assuming at this point, there's really no rush on this from the standpoint that it's not gonna be anything until next year's budget anyhow.
Yeah, correct.
Very good. Okay. Well, with that, I would say we've had our first reading, Mr. President.
All right. We'll consider ordinance number 2023, day 26, as having its first reading. That brings us to ordinance number 2023, day 27, presented by Mr. Sanders. It's slated for three readings. Ms. Hamilton, would you again read this important, albeit short, ordinance title?
Ordinance number 2023-27. An ordinance amending the annual appropriation ordinance.
And again, it's slated for three readings. Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a request to modify, actually, to utilize some of our opiate fund money to provide specialty health lab, advanced lab panels for our first responders. And this is, this would be blood work and items that normally would not be something that you would go to the doctor for and have in a blood panel. And so, at that point, due to the fact that the opioid money has a very thin utilization, and this falls within that, within one of those thin slivers, administration feels that this is a good opportunity to provide this service. At this point, I will say I'm gonna leave this on first reading tonight, but I do have an immediate question for the administration. So, we do this this year. What are we gonna do next year? And what are we gonna do the year after?
I can answer that, Mr. Sanders. So, this is, this was designed, this is only designed to be a one-time thing. This is based on some training that was done help and wellness training for both police and fire, and it was explained to the folks that we would do this one time, and the goal of having this done once is then to be able to go to your family doctor, have a discussion, and for them to then be able to track things.
Better utilize their existing panel system.
Kind of as the blueprint.
Gotcha.
This is like a baseline reading kind of thing?
Yeah. So, this is stuff that isn't, this is actually a panel that was developed specifically for first responders. One of the big things of the measures that they found in health and wellness for first responders is insulin resistance, which leads to stroke, dementia, Alzheimer's, heart attack. That's why you more frequently would lease the fire, but four or five years after we retire, we die because we don't manage stress well, we work nights, we eat horrible. It's the life we live. So, part of this with the health and wellness is if we can expel some of this off ahead of time and make you aware and start to track it, you know, hopefully, we're not needing money to increase insurance premiums.
There you go.
People are all mindful of we're doing those things. So, that's what this is designed to do. And I spoke to a couple before the meeting. We had 84 people between police and fire who volunteered for this. I was kind of shocked.
Wow.
I would've guessed it would've been half that, and there's a little bit of a buzz about it. I mentioned to somebody else that a couple of guys I normally see in the donut box every morning are like, hey, I'm going, try keto. I'm not eating those. So, it's at least starting some, we'll determine it's a great path. So.
I think it's a great idea. Good. Thank you.
Sir. I'm good.
Mr. Sanders, if I could, so this program, they'll probably do once, but if you remember, we will be getting opioid settlement for like the next 15 to 17 years. So, there'll be other programs that'll probably come up as we, as this money comes in every year that for us to spend it on.
Yeah.
I know it's, I know it's not going to be voted on this evening, but would it be all right if I asked a question?
Yes.
Okay. Chief Fisher, this just occurred to me, and when I was reading some of the, or maybe this was in the paperwork that you shared with me earlier, but some of the conditions that can be identified through this testing, I believe I saw one of them as sleep apnea. I know, I think that's one of them. I know that there are some, some careers or some jobs that are hindered by that. Is that, is that anything that would be problematic for our fire or police employees? Do you know? I mean, I'm just curious. I know, like, for example, a truck driver oftentimes can't get their CEL certification for, if they have sleep apnea.
Yeah. I don't know about fires, sleep apnea, Chief, do you know?
No, I mean, it's not a disqualifier.
Okay.
Employee, it isn't anything with our pension. I think it's a trickle-down that sleep apnea has as a catalyst for many other significant chronic medical conditions.
Right.
So, if we're able to identify that early, mitigate the issue, it may minimize those chronic issues from actually occurring.
Okay.
That's, that's the whole goal is our basic, our basic physicals that we can get through our insurance company doesn't dive into the detail to really provide the first responders, you know, a good avenue to develop those good health skills based on stress of our, you know, job. So, this hopefully, like Mr. Myers said, it would be a good, you know, baseline so that we'll be able to identify and work with our primary care physicians and at least internally, and I don't wanna speak for Matt, but internally, we're working for physical, you know, physical education and health and wellness education and peer support. So, this isn't a single, you know, objective. We're looking from a holistic perspective on how we maintain a healthy work staff because if they're healthy, obviously, that reduces overall costs. But good employees come, you know, when they're healthy, both physically and psychologically and emotionally.
Sure. No, I think it's a great program now that I understand it. I just thought of that, and I'm like, oh, wait, what if somebody, somebody loses their job because they have sleep apnea? That would be a.
If they lose their job, maybe their spouse, if they have.
I mean, this could be a life, a life ruiner.
Voluntary.
Okay.
The aspect is that, you know, we do a pretty in-depth physical.
Sure.
Within the Fire Department already, that's been, you know, funded and supported by the administration and council for many, many years.
Right.
But it is very specific in all of our policies and contracts that they're not to be penalized for, for those things. We don't even see the results.
Okay.
They go directly to the employee, and the employee can discuss them with their primary care physician. So, we technically don't know.
Okay.
And these results on the specialty panel included in the cost of the blood work is, and I can't remember, it's 30 or 45-minute session where the doc will actually sit down and go over with the officer or the firefighter, explain what it means, dive in depth so that they're better educated to know about their own health and then follow further health routes.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
Ordinance number 2023, day 27, has had its first reading. Brings us to resolution number 2023, day 68. It'll be presented by Mr. Reynolds, who I understand is gonna take all of Mr. Ansel's legislation this evening. This is slated for three readings. Ms. Hamilton, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2023-68. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the purchase of certain materials for the water treatment plant and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, in Mr. Ansel's absence, I was asked to sponsor these next five pieces, and for all of them, I am going to do my best to wing it through it, but the important person in the room is Mr. Fritz, and if we get to a position where we've got any in-depth questions, all eyes should be turned upon him, and I appreciate him being here tonight for that reason. This first one is chemicals that are part of the annual purchase for the water plant. Total estimated cost is $648,000. This is for the purchase of carbon dioxide, lime, phosphates, and sodium hypochlorite. I think I did that.
Sodium.
Sodium, I'm sorry. Sodium hypochlorite.
bleach.
If you don't mind, Mr. Rice, well, feel free to jump in at any time if you would like.
So, these are normal and customary purchases. They are, the purchases would actually start to take place in 2024, but the administration would like to start the bidding process soon as possible in order to get the best price we can. And with that in mind, I'm going to ask for the suspension of the rules on this.
All right. Mr. Reynolds has moved to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Would you please call the rule on the suspension of the rules?
Mr. Myers.
No.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Ms. Warden.
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Knappich.
Yes.
Mr. Cavan.
Yes.
All right. Despite your nay, I think we have enough to overcome.
No, you don't.
They don't?
5.25 is 75% of seven. You only have five.
Oh. All right.
Yep.
You gotta have six.
That's what I thought, but I saw some head bobbing over there. Next thing I know, they'll be doing the fumble whiskey because they're trying to draw me offside.
Seven fifths of America, it's a fraction.
Yep. So, anyways, the rules won't be suspended. With that, do you have any further comments?
I do not.
Any further questions? All right. Resolution number 2023, day 68 will have had its first reading. That brings us to resolution number 2023, day 69. Be presented by Mr. Reynolds. It's slated for three readings. Ms. Hamilton, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2023-69. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for pressed polymer for waste treatment and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pretty much everything I said with regard to the last resolution applies to this one, except now we're at the waste treatment plant. This time, we are talking about immersion polymer that, again, I guess, is purchased on an annual basis. The estimated total cost on this is $60,000. It's, again, something that would be spent in 2024, but we'd like to get it out to bid as soon as possible to get the best price available. Mr. Fritz can walk us through the gory details of exactly what these chemicals do if you want to know that information. But, and again, I hate to throw him under the bus, but he's here to answer any questions you might have for the same reasons as last time I moved to put this on third and final reading.
All right. Motion to move this to third and final reading by Mr. Reynolds. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Would you please call the rule on the motion to suspend the rules?
Ms. Knappich.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Cavan.
Yes.
Ms. Warden.
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
All right. The rules are suspended. Do you have another motion for us?
Yes, I moved for the adoption of resolution 2023-69.
All right. Motion to adopt by Mr. Reynolds is there? Second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Questions? Comments? I assume maybe I don't remember correctly, but this helps squeeze the water out so that we don't have as heavy a material to haul away?
It's used to thicken the sludge before it goes to the back, as you're asking.
I've learned a few things while I've been on council. Anything further?
Is there much volatility in that price? I know that, you know, we're saying that we want to move this along so that, you know, we can get the best price. Does it change? Does it fluctuate?
We're hoping not.
Okay.
But can you get it out to bid? You really don't know. It, well, it's only moving, you know, normal inflation, you know, 5%, 6%.
Okay.
All right. Saying nothing else, Ms. Hamilton, would you call the rule on the motion to adopt?
Ms. Knappich.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Cavan.
Yes.
Ms. Warden.
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Resolution number 2023, day 69 passes. First reading of resolution number 2023, day 70. It'll be presented by Mr. Reynolds. It's scheduled for three readings. Ms. Hamilton, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2023-70. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a contract to purchase replacement parts and improvements for the city's anaerobic digester system and biogas generator and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a project that has been long in the works as the materials provided to council indicate. We had a presentation on this in June of 2022. I don't know that there were dollar signs attached to it at the time, but I think we all knew that they were gonna be big dollars, and this certainly is. The total estimated cost is $4.75 million, of which ARPA grant is gonna cover $800,000, 1.5 million will come out of next year's capital funds budget, and 2.45 million will come out of the general operating bond revenue. This covers the aerobic digester system and biogas generator and our repairs. We need to get that up and running again. The project was presented to council again in June of 2022 and is part of the tenure infrastructure strategic plan included in the 2023 budget. The majority of the facilities and equipment were installed with the 2012 digester upgrades and are now at the end of their useful life. Recent failures in some of the components have moved the needed replacements forward and necessitated a more comprehensive project. This was originally budgeted at 2.2 million in 2022. This was originally budgeted at 2.2 million in 2022, 2.3 million at 2023, including $800,000 in ARPA funds, and we're anticipating 30% of additional grant reimbursement or a total of 1.5 million upon completion. Again, this is a lot of money to be spending on this, but this is one of the things that I think is unavoidable and is kind of the cost of doing business as a municipality. So again, for the same reasons I've said before, and being the eternal optimist, I'm gonna move to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Reynolds, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. If you would, Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Based upon the large amount that we are looking to, to, to ask for here or to attribute to this project, I, I am going to vote no and put this on a second reading.
Okay.
For more discussion and for the opportunity for the public to weigh in if they would like to, because that's an awful lot of money. And I know we've talked about it in the past, but I think keeping it on, on first tonight and letting it go forward the next time is probably, in my opinion, what I feel more comfortable doing.
All right, resolution number 2023 day 70 has had its first reading.
Mr. President, if I could just, Mr. Fritz, are you gonna be available at the next meeting? Okay. Since he was here tonight, if he was not, I was gonna say if you have questions now, this'd be a great time to hit him, but if he's gonna promise to be here next time, we're good then too.
All right. The penultimate piece of legislation, resolution number 2023 dash 71, it'll be presented by Mr. Reynolds, and it is slated for three readings. Ms. Hamilton, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2023 dash 71, a resolution authorizing the director of administration to enter into an agreement for the purchase of water meter replacements and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a request for authorization to purchase $110,000 worth of technology and also waiver the competitive bidding process for Badger water meters. This is a vendor that we have experience with and have had, they've had a good track record with us. And this is just the thing that we, the type of equipment we use on an annual basis to replace water meters. And there's no urgency to this, so we'll leave this on first reading, although again, Mr. Fritz is here and available to answer questions if anyone has them.
All right, we'll consider resolution number 2023 day 71, our final piece of legislation, resolution number 2023 day 72 will be presented by Mr. Reynolds, slated for three readings, although we look like we'll be holding Mr. Fritz captive for the next meeting. That being said, would you please read the title there, Ms. Hamilton?
Resolution number 2023 dash 72, a resolution authorizing the director of administration to enter into an agreement for the purchase of meter transmitting units and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This again has to do with the water meters. This isn't the meters themselves, but piece of equipment that's used as part of the automated reading system. Again, Mr. Fritz is here in a better position to talk about the details of what exactly this entails, but again, there's no urgency to this, and I'd like to leave this on first reading.
All right, resolution number 2023 day 72 has had its first reading, and I don't see anyone signed up for the miscellaneous public portion, so we'll write into council and start with Ms. Warden.
Uh, thank you. I just want to remind everybody to vote tomorrow on election day, and yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
And Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing to add.
Mr. Cavan?
I guess I, I would implore people to please get out and vote tomorrow. That's it, thank you.
Ms. Knappich?
I just wanted to just make one more inquiry of the city. What time will the, the program that was recorded today be on the city website on the November the 9th?
I think it will be here first thing.
All day? It'll be available all day?
I managed to talk to Aaron, the representative with O H M, and I think he said that he was gonna upload it tomorrow. So it may be sooner than the 9th. Original recommendation was that it would be here by the 9th.
Okay, great, thank you. And I wanted to apologize for not being here sooner. I was on the, the, or here for that presentation. I was on the, the committee for that, but I had a family emergency earlier this evening, so thank you for your consideration.
That's all.
Mr. Myers?
Nothing further to add, thank you.
And Mr. Sanders, we'll give you the last word.
I have nothing to add, Mr. President.
And do you have a motion?
I have motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.